All right, call to order. The October 1st, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen is called to order. Please share, Christine Vitale, Donna By, and Ms. Smoljar. And I ask you to all please rise for the class. Mr. Ryan, please pledge.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to share that David K. Kraft, U269, Home Fair Drive, term 2024-2027, has resigned from the Fair TV Commission. Just want to thank Mr. Kraft for his service on this very, very important commission and look forward to maybe tapping in for another commission in the future.
To number four, we have Acting Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director, Chief Dunn. Resolve that the town, that motion, that resolve the Town of Fairfield and its Board of Selectmen and Representative Town Meeting may enter into, with, and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security any and all documents which it deems necessary or appropriate and further resolve that Christine Vitale, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, its Board of Selectmen, and the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting, and to do and perform all acts and things deemed to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Question, second?
Second, Ms. Smoljar.
So, good afternoon. So whenever there's a change in selectmen, we have to authorize, we have to reauthorize the first, the new first selectman or selectwoman to be able to sign documents on behalf of the town in relation to DEMIS, which is the State Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security. So any of those grants, the EMPG grants, and I think Fort Security is under that also. So it's kind of perfunctory, but it's something we have to do whenever there's a change.
Any questions?
What's the $31,000?
Oh, so I was giving an example as the EMPG, which is the Emergency Management Performance Grant, we get that each year for performing basic emergency management functions, going to the meetings, updating the plan and things like that, and in turn, and doing those quarterly reports I used to hand you to sign. And we get 50 cents per capita, so that's, you know, 62,000 people, around 31,000 this year, I think they've told us they're going to give us, just for that program. Thanks.
Any public comment on this item? Seem on, back to the board.
Aye.
Question carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, purchasing authority. We have Mr. Tulon and Mr. Ryan, if necessary. To here consider an act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Antonazi Associates, P.C., of Bridgeport, Connecticut, to provide design services and else necessary for the replacement of entry doors at Old Town Hall for Town of Fairfield RFQ number 2023-202, for on-call architectural engineering design services and as detailed in the Antonazi proposal dated September 2025, for initial contract value not to exceed $18,200, with additional authority to enter into necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed approved funding for the project. I have my second. Question seconded by Ms. Smoljar. Adam, is Adam?
Yes, thank you.
You want to start on this?
Yep, just to get started, the resolution's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll just state for the record that this is per the guidelines, normal practices of our on-call architect and design services RFQ list. Mr. Ryan has worked with the design firm to come up, to get this proposal to a system in updating the doors at Old Town Hall. So he can speak more to that, but I just wanted to state for the record again that this is per our normal procedure and it falls in line with the on-call list.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, just to summarize, it's to replace the front doors, the three sets of front doors going to the front patio. They are, you know, really old and almost a risk. This is going to possibly make one an ADA compliant door. With that, you know, it's going to lead to the front patio, which we're getting concepts for. That's not part of this proposal, but it's part of another one. So look for some improvements to the front of Old Town Hall, but obviously keeping with the same historic look, it'll go through the Historic District Commission for approval, and this is just to lay the groundwork for that.
Any questions? Is this the same architect we used to do the Bridgefield Hall building?
This building and that building, Antonazi, Paul Leacy.
Yep. I mean, the door side has been a problem for a long time.
Yeah, so we've done the, the elevator improvement is completed, the structural improvements in the basement have been completed. This is the next step in that, on that Old Town Hall building.
There's money in the capital plan for just improvements to that building and this building, but it's given the need and the risk moving this forward sooner.
So there's no ADA compliance now?
There is. The, the back entrance to Old Town Hall leads to the ground floor, the town clerk's level, and then you take an elevator a half a floor up to the tax collector and the assessor's level, and then so on and so forth to the second floor, and technically Mark Barnhart's on the third floor.
And sometimes they have to go up and around and up and over.
Absolutely. The handicap parking is in the rear of the building and not always noticed.
Yes.
If we do some upgrades and, you know, assign some parking spots, it'll be front and center, the parking spots would be, and a ramp up to most likely, just talking concepts, the assessor's side set of doors to an automatic door to get you into the building, to go up a ramp to get you to the elevator to go to the other.
But that's a separate proposal that you're looking at?
The front patio is a separate, we're working on concepts, and then after that we will have to come back and, and go out to bid for those concepts.
Any other questions? No. Any public comment on this item? Seem on, back to the board for vote. Aye. Question carries. Three, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, number six, purchasing authority. To here consider an act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Milliman Inc., of Wakefield, Mass., to provide actuarial consulting services for the town as detailed in the Milliman engagement letter dated September 18th, 2025, for initial contract value not to exceed $19,500, with additional authority to enter into necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed approved funding for the project. Mr. Tulon, you want to kick it off?
Yes, thank you. So this is a relatively small dollar agreement. It falls under our bid threshold. So this is, I just have a note from the CFO, and I'm not sure if he hears here or not, but this is an engagement for Milliman to provide an independent actuarial analysis of the town's self-insured workers' compensation and heart and hypertension requirements. The information will be used to compile the town's annual financial statements and FY2627 budget. So this is a company that we have a strong history with, and we're just looking to proceed with this contract that satisfies the purchasing policy.
Thank you. Mr. Harris is also with us. Do you have anything that you want to add?
No, I think that's pretty straightforward. We've used them before, and this is a.
Sorry.
I was planning to say.
I know, but we need to get you on camera.
We've used the Milliman before. The information that they will provide will be used to compile the budget and prepare the financial statements for this year and portions of it for next year.
Any questions? To prepare this, aye, Tom.
Aye, how are you?
To prepare the statements.
Financial statements, there is, Milliman will prepare the reserve amounts for the heart and hypertension and for the general liability. I'm sorry, the workman's compensation, and those reserves go into the financial statements.
And they're, they're the ones that are doing our pensions?
Yes.
Is this, I'm, my memory's just a little fuzzy. I'm not remembering us doing this before. Is this new for them?
No, we did it, we did this last year.
But we hadn't done it in the past.
That was the first time we'd done it, yes.
Because I think the finance department was doing this before.
They made estimates, but this is, the, this company does actual actuarial studies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Any public comment on this item? Seem on, back to the board for vote. Aye. Question carries. Three, zero. Okay, we are moving on to number seven, Engineering Department. We have Anthony Santiago with Mr. Hurley. Whereas the Town of Fairfield has been awarded a steep 2025 grant in the total of $601,170 by the State of Connecticut, and whereas the grant requires funds from the town in the amount of $150,292 for the Reef Road Phase Two Pedestrian Improvements Project, and now therefore be it resolved, the First Selectman be and hereby is authorized to accept, appropriate, and expend said grant and execute any and all required documents to effectuate said grant. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Smoljar's seconded by Ms. Cupchik.
Okay.
Adam?
Hello. So this project is a continuation from the steep grant that we got awarded in 2023 for the first part of this project. That first part was on Rontail Road from Barlow going down to the Park and Ride, and a small portion of Reef Road from Nichols Avenue to Howard Street. We were awarded this competitive grant back in September, and we're just looking to get a board approval from all three boards so that we can continue on.
Any questions?
So is there currently sidewalk along all this area, or will you be putting new sidewalk?
There is currently sidewalk. On the sidewalk, I've been put in various, it's in various conditions and in various widths, as well as various materials. With this project, we'll have uniform five-foot sidewalks, brand-new sidewalks going all the way down. There are some areas where like if a developer, something on a house or something, and they were required to do a sidewalk, we'll probably not do those parts if they're in good condition, but we'll be replacing most of the sidewalks down this.
But there's no areas that don't currently have sidewalk where you're going to be adding sidewalk?
I believe that's true.
Okay, I just wanted to know that.
There's some form of sidewalk.
If there is any areas that we made sure we got like permission from, that we have buy-in from the residents in those areas, because I know like what's going on other side of town where there's some, you know, discrepancies about whether or not they want sidewalk or not, and I don't want to run into that problem here with that grant, so that's why I just want to know if we have that sidewalk. If, if it's already there, then it's not an issue.
Well, this is, this is, this was applied, I thought you instructed some registration originally.
It's important, definitely important.
And this will make existing sidewalks ADA compliant, which is a goal as we're doing these, these projects as well. Any questions? Any public comment?
I have a question. What was the reasoning behind, between Nichols and Howard? Why was it not from the Post Road to Howard? Well, the reason I ask that is because the sidewalk condition between Post Road and How, and Nichols is defloratory also, so just curious as to why that section and not the other.
I'd have to look into that. I myself was not part of the design phase. I was a former engineer who's no longer with the town, so I'd have to look into why the, why the scope of work started in Nichols.
Okay.
Chief's comment, could we take a look at that and get some information back? To the chief's comment, could you take a look into that?
Absolutely.
And give that, maybe through emails to us about it, because maybe the town can use some money to get it done, or we could do it in-house.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Something that's not part of the grant. We can ask Ms. Hurley if she has any additional information.
It's a small piece.
Yeah. I should make a public comment on that one. Any additional public comment on this? Seem on, back to the board for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, we have our registrars of voters with us, Mr. Wagner and Ms. Cleti. To here consider an act on approving a grant agreement between Town of Fairfield and the Connecticut Office of the Secretary of State for costs related to implementing and conducting early voting and further authorizing the First Selectman to accept, appropriate, and expend said grant and execute any and all required documents to effectuate said grant. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Cupchik, Smoljar's seconding.
What is the amount of the grant? I can't see it.
At least $5,000?
How much is it?
Mr. Wagner can come up and present. And we have Ms. Cleti on Zoom. Hello. Sorry, Kathy, you can see there.
You may have the, the dollars and cents figure, it's just over $29,000 for the grant.
And is there any specifications on what it can be used for and what it cannot be used for?
So the, the purpose of the grant from the state legislature is to assist us in financing our early voting, and so whatever we spend it on has to pertain in some way to early voting.
And it's all for the 2025 election? It has nothing to do with any future elections?
It has to be expended by the end of the calendar year.
Do you have some initial thoughts on areas where you'd want to spend this money?
We do. That may be a longer discussion, which we could have here or not. Your pleasure. You know, Kathy and I have been discussing it amongst ourselves. I know you've certainly been on some of those email chains, so I'll defer to you as to whether you want to invite that for your meeting or not.
I think it's good to hear about it.
I think the warrant is for their information of the public, just some, some things that this money could be expended.
Kathy, you want to start?
Matt, you had been looking into some equipment. I know I would prefer a lot of this to go towards the labor cost, as that is really the highest expense you have for early voting. Tabulators, I believe, Matt, you still would like tabulators?
Yeah.
I don't see how you could get any more than one and have it pertain to early voting.
How much is a tabulator?
About $6,000 for a tabulator.
But I mean, in the past, if I remember correctly, staffing is very expensive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, obviously having to, to man all of that and deal with all of that, and the postcards and ballots.
Yeah, I don't imagine we'd have any challenge expending the full amount regardless.
So what happens if, so obviously we're going to need extra ballots, we're going to need all these things. What happens if the two of you don't agree?
That's an interesting question. My suggestion to Kathy is that we sort of look at our, that amount and divide it amongst ourselves and spend it on the early voting-related priorities that we have. You know, that's, again, the discussion that we're having internally. I think both of our preference was probably to try to reduce the amount that would have to be appropriated for the special election, if that was possible. It does not seem possible with the December 31st deadline for us to do that. So, you know, I guess just internally, you know, like we're negotiating, and hopefully we'll, we'll come to a consensus on that. I'll say, the discussion about the tabulators is that we, we've been given a supply of 27 tabulators. We are scheduled to use 26 in this year's election and 28 in next year's election, which is, you know, a little bit of a, you have to sort of start to make trade-offs that where you say, okay, are we going to not have a backup for one of our machines? So if something goes down on Election Day, we wait, either hand-count it or do something different to try and count those ballots. We do two different things with our backup machines, where in some cases we will use them to provide an instant replacement if there's an equipment failure. We also use them to conduct recounts, if necessary. So we have sort of three needs for each machine, which you say, okay, well, if we have one equipment failure, do we then have spares necessary to conduct recounts as well? I'll say, part of the discussion that we're having is, we expect the state, and there was, there's been a lot in the news that you could read about the anticipated usage of tabulators at early voting, which there's a broad consensus in the legislature to implementing, but it did not get called in the session, so it was going to be a part of the special session that we were anticipating for this fall. So should that happen, the, I think the question becomes, you know, whether we have, whether we're one tabulator short or a greater number of tabulators short, we have a, you know, Fairfield is one of the towns that has done multiple early voting locations, and it would foreclose on the possibility of having multiple in the future if we did not have additional tabulators and this expected policy were to come into effect. So we would be able to use that equipment for early voting, to have additional backups for counting early voting ballots, and to have additional equipment available for the future. I'll say, regardless of sort of what happens in the context of this grant, I do think that it would be worthwhile for us to engage the administration in a conversation about what would be the sort of correct supply for us to have to meet our sort of future needs. We've been given, we worked for 20 years with six additional machines sort of in our inventory, and we now are one short of our expected needs. So that's sort of a different dynamic than we're accustomed to in the office. It makes us make different trade-offs in terms of how we operate the election.
How do we lose those five, or what happened to them?
We were originally scheduled, and when we did our budget for this fiscal year, we were anticipating receiving 38 machines from the state. They made a reallocation internally after our budget was passed, where they reduced our number by 11 in order to give smaller counts a larger number.
So can you explain how the legislation impacts our early voting? Because my, my assumption is, do we have how many tabulators?
We have 26 regular and one high-speed tabulator for counting centrally.
So how many do you use during the early voting locations? How many?
We don't use any, actually. Since it hasn't passed, I think it's really premature to assume that we're going to have tabulators early voting, and I'm not even sure it would be legal to add. I could see adding one, because you have central count, and you could say it's an early voting backup tabulator, but any more than that, I don't think would be appropriate.
Backup tabulator sounds like a.
No, it does, but I just know that.
A good idea.
Early voting, right, is only in so many locations. You're not using your full amount of tabulators as you would in a normal poll polling locations. And obviously, Mr. Harris can speak to you about it, you know, how, how much is in that budget, because obviously you're going to need money for staffing, and you. and you have to have it. It is a lot of extra people that have to man this stuff, so. I just wanted to ask, because to be perfectly honest, I think Kathy's right. There's a lot of consternation about this special election, and housing is the number one topic. That's going to be discussed, I'm not sure all these other little things that are sort of probably being promised by some people are even going to happen, because I think there's going to be a lot of attention paid to the housing thing, and everybody's going to be very focused on it. I served up there, so I know when something big like that, all the little stuff that gets promised by agency department heads and commissioners doesn't always hit the skids, so to speak.
And I just want to mention one thing, that the early voting staffing actually cost $27,540 just for the November election.
And that's not early voting, that doesn't include early voting?
That is, that is the early voting amount, yeah.
And just early voting.
And do we have that money in the budget now?
We do.
We do.
So what I'll say is that, you know, we could certainly apply the entire grant to the money that was already budgeted to our department, and the discussion we're having is the extent to which we do that versus sort of address other priorities that were not a part of that. One of those is additional tabulators, one of them is maintenance, which was not in budgeted. We anticipated that would be covered for the fiscal year, and it was ultimately not by the state. So, you know, those are the discussions to say, well, these are the things that were not in the budget, and do we either apply the grant to that, or do we apply the grant essentially to all the things that we have currently budgeted, and then when we return to your boards to fund our special election requests, do we ask for a transfer to cover those other things to be a part of that in that conversation? Which I think that that, that's something that in our sort of exchanges, is something that I'm sort of willing to be our approach here, if it simplifies the process for accepting this grant at your stage here.
Well, I would encourage you to work with both of them, I know there's been issues in the past about agreements, and we don't want to lose a lot of money because
No, I think that for, you know, it's not up to the three of us to make the decision on how the money is spent right now, it's just whether or not we want to accept that money.
Right, no, I agree, I'm just saying off record.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You could sit down and try to get them to agree, because we don't want to blow 30 grand.
Sure, and I just also want to mention that the tabulators, we actually have 13 backup tabulators, really, and what are the odds that they're all going to break down and not work? You can easily switch the memory stick from one tabulator to another. That's all it is, a tabulator is an empty shell, and the little USB, it's similar to the memory card of the old tabulators, pop it out, pop it into the other machine.
So we have 20, how many do we have total, Kathy?
We have 27, one is the high-speed central count, and 26 of the smaller ones.
And then we have 13 backup?
Yes, you have to give each polling location a backup tabulator.
So we have a lot.
We do, we do.
We have 26, including the backups.
Okay.
Can I just have a question for the public? So, early voting, sometimes you think like tabulator, like why can't you use the tabulator early voting, you have 27 to use during early voting, and then go to the regular election, you won't need that, because it won't be early voting. But can you explain for us to the public why you can't use the early voting tabulator at like Stratfield or something like that?
Sure, so I'll say that, you know, we program them all at once, and we deploy them to our polling places. And we do, you know, it's been our internal preference to have a backup available onsite at each polling place. That's not strictly speaking required, I think it's a best practice that you want to have the minimum possible downtime in case a machine does fail. So that is, that is one of the trade-offs when we run short, do we choose the smallest polling place to not have a backup for? That may be like a strategic question that we can answer, but at that point, you're down to, you know, we now have four tabulators remaining, as well as one high-speed to be used for central counting on election day. And so for those four machines that we have remaining, if we had an early voting site that used a tabulator that would have one and a second as a backup, so we would have two remaining tabulators, and two tabulators and one high-speed would leave us without a backup for either the absentee ballots or the same-day registration ballots that we would need to count. So we just don't have this applied, so we could certainly have a larger number available to early voting if we compromised on the principle that I think we're in agreement on, certainly historically, to have a backup supply to every location available.
But just for the public, it's not like early voting, you can count early, you have to count it on election day.
Right now we do, and that's the policy change being sort of anticipated from the legislature.
Thank you. And for the public, can you just share when early voting starts?
Oh.
And where?
Or a public service announcement.
A little PSA.
Kathy, would you like to do the PSA? I'm happy to, but I feel like I've been talking a lot, so.
It starts October 20th, and it ends November 2nd, which is a Sunday. And the hours are 10 to 6, with extended hours on October 28th and the 30th. And it will be held at Fairfield University's bookstore at 1499 Post Road on the second floor. And parking is actually, you could park in Sherman Street in the garage.
There's a second level on that garage, correct?
There is, but there's not going to be
There's not access from the second level?
Yeah.
Not so far, we're optimistic, but it doesn't look like it.
Okay. And this is for, just for the municipal election on November 4th, the special election is February 3rd for the Office of First Selectmen.
We would expect a one-week early voting period for that location to be determined.
You've just gotten some questions about, you know, dates and locations. All right, thank you. Any other questions for either Ms. Pleady or Mr. Wagner? Okay, we'll take it to the public, any public comment on this? Back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, please. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Police Chief Paris with us. To here consider and act upon an agreement between the Town of Fairfield Police Department and Hampton Consulting LLC to provide clinical consultation services or supervision, and further authorizing the first selectmen to execute any and all documents in connection with said agreement. Can I have a motion? So moved. Slowly. Second? Second?
I thought I said so moved, I'm sorry.
I think you did, I don't know. Sometimes you talk at the same time. Second by Ms. Kupchak.
Hi, good afternoon. So this is the long-awaited clinical supervision for our ever-so-great clinical social worker Jessica Bloomberg. And if you don't mind, I'll explain a little bit task supervision versus clinical supervision, and why the need of clinical supervision is needed. Jessica conducts all, if not, most if not all of our mental health assessments, visits, et cetera, throughout our police department. And she's been such a great resource to our officers in Town of Fairfield for sure. Jessica has done great work for us, but what we have lacked was the supervision needed on her side for mental health assessments and best practice for clinical social workers. The task supervision is still going to be maintained by our supervisors here. We will manage her daily tasks and daily supervision as she will be responding to calls for service, et cetera. But the clinical side is truly what is the best practice for the National Association of Social Workers, where Jessica will have access to somebody to be able to ensure that she's providing the best care to our residents. And as she is speaking to people, giving them advice, recommending resources, we want to ensure that Jessica is one, giving those resources properly, she wants to ensure this also. And by having somebody on hand that she can go to that's not a police officer, not trained to do this, we have the ability to have somebody independent for Jessica to go to. There's a lot of calls for service that are very taxing on the mental health of our officers, one, but really on Jessica, and that's really what we're focusing on today, is Jessica's wellbeing also. You know, she's not necessarily a superwoman, although I would, I would call her that in my, in my dreams here, but she is truly needed to have a great person to access so that she has the opportunity to ensure that she is mentally healthy also.
Thank you, and I will say that I've had numerous people, members of the public, basically stopped me on the street and advocate for this service. So I was very happy that you requested that this be put on the agenda. Will absolutely, actually, I'm not going to speak, I'm going to, you know, respect proper process and bring it to my colleagues first.
I'm very excited that this is brought, I think it's very important in any like health field or anything to really have that supervision and that ability to talk with a colleague that really understands, and it has to be specific to what you're talking about. So like, even for physical therapy, like I work with senior population, it would be appropriate with, for me to talk to somebody in the pediatric realm, like it just, it's not the same. So she really, you know, while we have other social workers that work for the town, that would be the same amount of supervision, so I think this is excellent, I'm really excited that you're doing this, it's been a great program overall. I really hope it can expand, and I'm definitely for it, so thank you.
I obviously think this is a great compliment to the program that, and I just want to give shout-out to Detective Deputy Chief Waya and Beth Leach and Julie DeMarco, who really spent during my term a lot of time putting together this proposal. Had been wanting to do it for many, many years, and they buttoned it up very well, and it's been a home run. It's huge, and to add this is a perfect compliment, and I hope that you'll be asking for another social worker to add force at some point, because I, we do want Jessica to be healthy, and we don't want her to have nervous breakdown, because she's dealing with all the mental health issues in our town, which police are often called to manage, so. I'm excited to support this.
We are too.
Absolutely, Jessica supports our community across the realm of issues, always there to help, and I think it would be a disservice for us to not give her the resources she needs for her own mental health, and also to just to excel at her craft. I thank you for just, for being there for our community especially, for our police officers, and for those families that you help each and every day. Appreciate how hard that your job is, and very happy to move this forward. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number 10. Step there. To here consider and act on the following resolution as recommended by the Chief of Police. Resolve that to achieve the purposes of the federal emergency management agencies FEMA Port Security Grant, PSG, to maintain or reestablish maritime security funds be and hereby are expended in the amount of $104,053 to support increased portwide risk management and protect critical surface transportation infrastructure. $78,040 of said cost to be funded by the PSG grant, and $26,013 of said grant to be matched by the Fairfield Police Department. And further resolve that First Selectmen Christine Battali is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof to secure said grant.
So much.
Second?
Second.
So thank you so much, just going to give you a little bit of background in how these grants work. Town of Fairfield was recently awarded another Port Security Grant. Purpose of this grant is to sustain our marine assets. Total approved project is $104,053. Of this amount, FEMA will provide $78,040 of federal funding, and the Town of Fairfield is responsible for contributing $26,013 in matching non-federal funds. Now basically, that would be covered by our regular operating budget, we would normally cover those costs from our maintenance and repair of automotive. The grant period runs from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2028, allowing us to spread these funds strategically over three fiscal years. The primary use of these funds will be to upgrade the 10-year-old electronics on our Safe Boat 23, and to sustain the structural integrity of this vessel. In addition, the grant allows flexibility to address unanticipated needs for maintenance and repair of our vessels. This grant ensures that critical public safety infrastructure is maintained without placing the full cost on the Fairfield taxpayers. By spreading the award over three years, we maximize the impact of the funding, extend the service life of our assets, and preserve the operational readiness of our marine unit for years to come. And we respectfully request approval to receive on the awarded funds.
Any questions?
How good you were.
Pretty much covered, covered all the bases there, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, carries, 3-0. Moving on to number 11. Police Chief, to here consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $3,383,974, $64, excuse me, $64.38 for costs related to the Fairfield Police Department technology upgrades, authorizing the application of ARPA funds in the amount of $845,020.84 to fund a portion of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the balance of the appropriation in the amount of $2,538,943.54. Can I have a motion?
So much.
Ms. Kupchak, second, by Ms. Poliar. Chief passes.
Okay, so this is a proposal to bond for the next five years, that amount funded that you just explained regarding our Axon equipment. And that would be to, I'll go through the list of things that we'd be doing. We'd be increasing the number of users for our Axon body cameras, which you're mandated to have by the state of Connecticut. Our increased fleet system, so adding our fleet car cameras, which is another mandate from the state of Connecticut. Tasers, our tasers right now are currently Taser 7s, and the updated technology is a Taser 10. We like in police service, especially with tasers that are being used to control a person, to have the most updated technology, the Taser 10. A refresh of our body worn dock hardware, routers in the car which are needed in order to operate these cameras. One thing new is the Drone for First Response Program, which is something that we have seen time and time again as a great success for police departments to have an eye in the sky prior to our officers' arrival to ensure that there is not a threat to ourselves, to the fire department, to any emergency responder that's responding to a call for service. We've seen police departments in the area, Milford for example, using drones to respond to certain emergencies in areas that maybe police can't get to in a timely fashion, let's say we have Bret Woods for example, where we can't get into the Bret Woods really quickly, we'd be able to ensure a drone is there and responding prior to our officers. With that comes a couple, you know, technology upgrades regarding those drones, which is, allows us to go to a certain feet, which is called counter drone, which is, allows us to go up to 400 feet. And our license plate reader systems, which is, again, something that we have seen as a police department to be a great technology tool, not allowing our officers to chase these people that are committing crimes, but we're able to ensure that the public is safe by ensuring that we have the ability to know where people are in the town. And by using these systems that we have currently, it only helps us in a police department. We have, we have to keep up with the technology as to things that are occurring, and this is just one thing to do that. Axon Assistant is something that we're very excited to use. This is a part of the package to our body worn cameras and a new upgrade for Axon. Axon has come up with this new technology so that if we're encountering somebody that doesn't speak the English language, the body camera will translate for us, and our words will translate back to them in their native language up to 50 different languages. Pretty powerful, which is something that we encounter a lot lately, where there's not a Spanish-speaking officer or Chinese-speaking officer, our body cameras on every single officer. officer will be able to translate. And not only does it translate, it transcribes it for us. So we have a transcription of what is said into our evidence.com system. And then Axon Interview Room, this is another requirement from the state. We are allowed, we have to interview people and have it recorded. And this is, what we're trying to do with this whole process is to encompass it under one vendor. Right now we have several different vendors, we have several different contracts that span several different years. We're trying to ensure that this refresh in this contract is under one vendor. All of this equipment is under one umbrella, which I think is the important thing for this.
Any questions?
No, but I think maybe just for the public certification, the board got an email from a resident and just for people, I was a little surprised. A lot of people don't understand that body cam and dash cams are state law because police have a lot of accountability that's put upon them. And someone asked about the tasers and again, it's a, they've been, how long chief, would you say? Have they been?
20 years, 20, 25 years maybe. I've been here 20, so probably as long as me, so 20 years I would say.
And I think that the person had asked, why do they need them? And obviously I, you know, sometimes you're so into something, you know a lot and you don't realize maybe the average person doesn't know that. We always want them to have that tool for having to use their weapon and they do too. So, so that's why they're needed. And I think, just to clarify that for anybody who might not know, I, I was really glad to support this when we got the ARPA money, we were just kicking this off in the beginning because as the chief stated, we, you know, we have so much different mishmash and, you know, they have huge accountability issues where this stuff needs to be stored and if someone says something didn't happen during arrest, the cam has it all on, on video. And so it's very important not just for the public to feel like they have, that our police are accountable, but also for the police to have that evidence to be able to protect themselves from unwarranted accusations. And I think the drone is a great idea. I think it protects our, our officers and our, our other first responders in case someone's, you know, who knows, placing a bomb or is there with weapons and they don't know before they get there. So obviously it protects them and the public. So I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Well said what she said. I totally agree with her on that. I do have the one question. You said that some of these were under different contracts. Are those all expired? How are you ending those contracts?
So we've engaged with a year-to-year contracts, kind of assuming that Axon was going to do something like this. So yes, they will expire at, at the end of the year and, and when they're able to, when they do expire, we would hope that Axon, hopefully the, this passes the boards, but we hope that Axon picks up after the, the contracts expire.
So we won't be double contracted?
No ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Do you foresee additional, I'm just being, this is for five years, additional costs coming in the upcoming five years for this equipment or is this pretty much going to cover us?
This would cover us and I, I failed to say one thing that is important to note. If we were to purchase all of these items in separate buckets, it would cost us 2.87 million more. By consolidating the contract in such a way, it saves us that much money.
One other question, someone asked for the public certification. How often do we use our tasers and how long do they last?
Sure, sure. So tasers are, are a piece of equipment, right? So if they get wet in a certain degree, they may need to be replaced, which is, you know, being a shoreline town, we have the opportunities to get those devices wet, but they're still, you know, they uphold to a certain degree. But they'll last up until they don't last, if that's a, if a good answer. These, these devices are strong. We trust in Axon. We trust that Axon is making the best product. They're the only person that's making this product for that matter. And those less lethal devices that we're using, again, is an important tool prior to using our firearm on somebody, we want to use less lethal prior to that. So.
And part of the contract, did they replace?
They do. They're going to replace all of our tasers with the updated.
And when they break, is there some kind of agreement where they fix it or?
So this is Joe from Axon. Yeah. So yes, that is.
Actually Representative Whackerman and I got to shoot the tasers when you first came to, I would say I really liked it.
Who was on the other end of it?
Yeah, exactly. I'd like to have one with me at all times.
Very powerful tool, especially law enforcement.
Sorry, I, I just had to say it.
Okay. No gavel, just a taser at meetings?
Yeah, no, I just have it on me. Just to have it. Some meetings you need, I need a protection to be honest. I could have used a taser.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
You ladies, appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for all your support. Selectman Vitale, would you like to sign the contract for Hampton now so we can get the process rolling for Jessica?
I will sign it, but just before, but check, just double check with the.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, yeah, and we did, this is three quotes, this is the chief's quote.
It's the chief's.
Sorry. Thank you. Should go to the period before I ask you.
All right. While you're doing that, we'll move on to number 12. We have the Director of Operations for the Fairfield Public Schools as well as Attorney Safstrom from, as our bond counsel. To here, consider and to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $74,567,303 for costs associated with Timothy Dwight Elementary School replacement and early childhood center project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such an appropriation. Motion? In unison. Ms. Kupchak, second by Ms. Mr. Papa George.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, good evening, everyone. So before you, you'll have your 14, your standard 14 points that we put together for you. A lot of the information is preliminary and backup to the Svejals report that you've all received and had a presentation from Svejals on with the working group. Either walk through it or answer questions that may.
So this is the seed money, correct?
This is, we're, we're doing the authorization for the full amount.
For the full amount.
We're not, the Board of Ed made a, last fiscal year, then we went through the feasibility study and now based on that, we're, you know, they're coming for the full, full project approval.
The public's authentication, maybe Angeles could just, you don't have to go through the whole year-long process.
Yep.
Just, what is this going to do for us? How many kids for ECC? How many kids at Dwight and what locations?
And we also have Chair of the Board of Ed, Mr. Peterson, as well. Board members have any question?
So the, the town's working group contracted with Svejals to do the assessment for multiple sites, including Dwight, Jennings, Mona Terrace, Osborne and.
Jennings.
I thought I said Jennings, I'm sorry. So we, the, the working group worked through, looking at all those sites to come up with what the best long-term facilities plan is for the town, not just the school system. And one of the things that was recommended out of that study was to move forwards with a construction project at Dwight that would house the ECC and some of the special educational programs. That being said, we did feel that the Svejals report did dig in enough where usually we do a seed money upfront. This time we are asking for a full bonding approval so that we are able to go to the state and get this, get a state sort of, get this approved as a state project so that we are in line for reimbursement. There is currently reimbursement bumps for ECC programming, so we are in line for that. There's also some, some increased bumps for special education programming. They all have different ways they play out into the total cost of the project, but we felt we were comfortable enough using this Svejals numbers to move forwards with the full amount. As you all know, the state will not accept a application for a project unless the town has already shown that they are willing to fund, fund the full amount of the project. So with seed money, we would not be able to move forwards with the state project request, but we can move forwards with that application as long as this makes it through all the bodies and is approved for funding.
What do you think we're estimated to get back from the state in total on everything?
So I do have. Finally, I know it's in the Svejals report here. I think I have it already pulled up. Nope. So the base, no. So we're, we're anticipating approximately 14.819 for reimbursement on this project as funded at the 74, $74 million mark that we are asking for today.
Just for the board and the public, the state right now is giving a 15% bump to total project cost for project that adds early childhood classrooms. So that will bump up the reimbursement and for special education spaces, another 15% bump, but only for the part of the project that's dedicated just to special education spaces. So this is.
For programming.
For programming, for special education programming. So anticipating getting more money than just a standard renovations for some of our past projects. Where, so there's an incentive to move this forward quickly. As you can imagine, people are getting in line for this funding. There's been some rumors that the funding formula might change, so we want to get in line before that happens.
Our understanding and nothing officially from the state yet was that come early spring that they're, they're probably going to start putting a cap on the reimbursement for ECC's spend out per year. So that bump, that 15% bump, once they hit that cap, they will no longer be offering that bump to projects. That's one of the reasons we wanted to be first to get in line for it.
Right. I mean, obviously this is a, this is a big nut. And, you know, I, I think while it was helpful to do all this looking around the past year, I didn't really have faith in really any of the other sites, possibly the, where we have the Walter Fitzgerald School, but I didn't think any of their sites would hold water. It's just, it's so hard to swallow this. It, it's such a big number. And you know, this is coming from somebody who's been involved with, in public service longer than both of you. And, you know, I mean, when, it took me a year to, to get, you know, to get the town on board about knocking down McKinley School, which was a disaster area, all you know, all the kids were sick and it was so bad. And, you know, back then it was $21 million and I thought people's heads were going to pop off. You know, this is, this is a significant amount of money. And, you know, I want to support this and I will support this, but I just want to make, say for the record that, you know, we really, you know, when I, and during my administration, I, I made it very clear about how much we were going to bond per schools and with the, in the town side each year, I put a cap on it. So I am saying this and it's not to you, Angeles, because you have no power, I'm saying it's to you, Jeff, as Chairman of the Board of Ed, that we, we really need to slow down. You know, I know everybody wants everything. They want air conditioning everywhere, they want all these nice things and I get it. I want it too, but you know, it's like anything in life, you gotta make choices. And $74 million is a lot. It's the biggest appropriation next to the two high schools back in the day when, when we pushed for that. It's big. So I just want to say that for the record, that I hope that the board and the administration takes into account that we, we have a town that, and we were just talking about this when we had Julie here and we're talking about the seniors and how hard it is. I mean, our senior center is to me an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment. I'm embarrassed by it. I, I think they deserve better. I think it should be, it should be a lot nicer than it is and I think we should, need to invest in our seniors too. So I just want to say that for the record, so that during your board meetings, you can all say, you know, we just asked the town to give us $74 million and we need to slow roll a little bit on the spending because it's, it's a lot. It's a lot of money. And it's not more kids, but it's a lot of money.
I just want to, I want to say, totally understand the scope of the, of the, of the project here, but I also want to say that I think one of the things that's come out of the working group process is the recognition, and I've talked to this about with First Selectman Vitale, with the Chair of the Board of Finance, that we need to have kind of better discussions and ongoing discussions throughout the year about how projects may be developing, what's coming down the line so that there are no surprises, no one, no one is in the dark. We are, we are looking forward, we're all on the same page. I felt like we had a very constructive discussion at the capital planning summit last week, you know, trying to make sure that all of these pieces fit together with, you know, the town and the, you know, we, we want to be, we want to be a good partner with the town. We always, we always want to do that. We're going to advocate for what we believe that the children need, but recognizing that we're in a part of a broader system that, you know, that we need to have better communication with, between other town bodies and, and to make sure that we, again, no surprises, everyone's on the same page. And I think just going forward, I think that's a good principle to follow.
I used to say when I was on the Board of Ed to Ken Flato, you know, listen, all we care about is education. You're the guy that has to say no.
And look where you are now.
We're going to send everything to you. So you better, you know, it's up to you if you want to fund it or not. So you're in a different position. I get it. So it's just a broad comment.
I, I agree. I think the capital planning meeting though was very informative about how you guys were breaking it down within the town, how we're supporting other areas. We do have several things coming our way. We have Jennings coming our way from you guys, not too far away. So, but I think we've pushed it down the road too far. I think the past year has been informative. It's helped us, it's helped us get the design of the building. It looks like it'll be on one level or on a level where we can have better access to it by moving it back into the rocks or whatever, the cliff, whatever it is. So I think that was helpful, but I, I definitely don't think it's a rushed process. I think it needs to happen. We, we've done a lot of research. You guys have done a lot of research, not me, but you know, you guys have done a lot on that. And so I do think it's time to move forward. We have to move it forward so that we can get the funding for that and not miss out on that. So, thank you.
And while I may not have been in public service as long as you have, I had probably had a child at Dwight Elementary School for as long as you had, you were in public service. So I think that this is not, this building has needed.
Moana needs to.
To be addressed for a long time and I think that there was, just got delayed in part due to funding, due to questions about enrollment and whether or not open or closed. And we did our due diligence in answering those questions and realizing that it's not only the few hundred kids that are going to be at Dwight Elementary School, this is impacting our entire district, not only in the next five years, but in the next 50 years. So we need to plan for the future. Very much appreciate, you know, trying under your administration, evening out the pie, but even, we had those discussions that unfortunately building a new school and even renovating a new school isn't going to cost 12 and a half million dollars. So we have to have those discussions and I think that the capital planning workshop in terms of keeping our expenditures under the bonding cap of 10%, we're under 9%, that we're being, being thoughtful in that and we have headroom if these, these prices should change, hopefully they'll go down. But if they don't, that there's still some headroom there. Hear you about the senior center in terms of renovations and we've done renovations in that building. It's, it's a challenging building as we've heard from, in part from the feasibility study being that it is in a flood, flood plain. And we do have a FEMA cap and there's only so much you can do at a particular amount of time. But that's, that's a conversation I think to be continued and I think the feasibility study just gave us some information on, on that, that building. The Giant Steps property, there was some other alternatives for school sites, you know, ruled out Riverfield. Osborne Hill was an option for adding space, just reconfirmed the, the direction the Board of Ed was taking last year with wanting to add ECC sites, the classrooms at Jennings. classrooms at Jennings. So I think that we have a, a plan moving forward, not diminishing the price tag, but we don't, things cost what they cost right now, and unfortunately, the prices have escalated, and the longer, I wish we could go back, because there's some years that we probably, we had more bonding capacity than we took advantage of, and maybe we should have done more back then, not even saying to your administration, but just even just going, just going way back.
And I think that.
But we're here now.
So Mike Testanis, you know, talking about how keeping some of our special ed house will save us money down the road, so that's, that's an encouraging development. Jeff, can I ask you, is there a plan, what's the plan, to leave Dwight as is, where the kids are going to be in the building?
Correct.
And ECC kids will stay where they are until this spaces are built out?
More or less. I mean, depending on any shifts in ECC enrollment, we may need to make some adjustments, but right now, you know, we have, we have kids at Stratfield, we have kids at Holland Hill and at the, at the Ward site, just trying to make the best use of those sites as we can. But one of the, one of the big advantages actually of the, of the new build versus renovation was the idea that the kids could stay there. If we were going to renovate that building, it might take longer. We were told by Sviggals that the price could go up in the range of 20%, and we would need to figure out how to stage things ideally, so we wouldn't need to move too many kids, but moving kids out of that building during a renovation project was definite possibility and a definite cost. So like, by building this new building, and my understanding of Sviggals' plans is it would be like right next door, like there will be a point where it's just a few feet away from the, the current building to the, to the new building, but they will be able to do it while the kids are in the facility, it just simplifies things to a great degree and, and does, and does save money and reduces the risk of, you know, if we're renovating and we find more asbestos in the building than we anticipated, then what do we do with the kids at that point? New build eliminates all of those challenges.
And you, are you feeling, is the board feeling confident about being able to keep the ECC kids where they are until this is built up? Because only some kids are going there, is that correct?
Correct.
And some will go into Jennings, new build?
Dwight and Jennings sites are going to support. What we have now is a three-site model. We have basically a, a critical mass of five classrooms per site, five sections per site. So yes, so like, when it's all done, Dwight will have a third, Jennings will have a third, and Ward will have a third. And it's just, it's kind of a reshuffling of that three, three-site model that we're working with now.
And the ECC is somewhat hard to predict enrollment, being that they are three-year-olds, you know, so if these children haven't been born yet, and we are required, and just for the public's sake, to give, provide services for those childrens who were identified with a disability, and you may not necessarily know which children are going to have a disability, you do child find and they're in birth to three. So there's a challenge with that.
I think my question was more surrounding about where, where is the town now regarding the Child's Garden space?
I think that that is still in conversa, discussion about the, if I email Mr. Testanis and Mr. Peterson today about that, still a question mark in that this school's not going to be built for two, three years in completion, in part, my understanding.
About what?
Depending.
Three years.
Two years.
Probably close to a three-year project by the time it's turned over and fully opened.
With Jennings and Dwight?
Just Dwight.
Just Dwight.
Four years.
That was the issue with the Child's Garden, if we, if we felt like we needed overflow space during that period of time, those classrooms seemed attractive, and they, and they may still be. We're, we're working with the facilities that we have now, but we have two classrooms currently in Holland Hill, and that, and that is a very crowded school with those, with those two classrooms added there. So it's always, there's some moving target aspect of the way we're doing things now, which is why.
I mean, that's why the Stratfield.
Five.
Five, and, and two only at Holland Hill?
Two at Holland Hill and five at, and five at Ward. But we're, we're, we're building in additional capacity, because this has been, as you know, growing and growing and growing, so that's why we're looking at the, at the, sorry.
And I think just part of the discussions with Child's Garden wasn't only using that as swing space, but overcrowding at McKinley Elementary School, which is getting to be, and I don't know, I haven't looked at this year's enrollment numbers, but we may need elementary space in certain areas of town, and taking those children out of Stratfield, the ECC classrooms out of Stratfield might be necessary in the next three years, because we may need them for elementary school children.
Correct.
And if we do that, Dwight will not, will not be built yet, so there will need to be a location for.
I mean, you've been in that building.
For the ECC.
Been in that Child's Garden.
I have, I have not been in that part of it.
You should go take a look at it.
And it's, so it's not.
Because.
Well, this would be temporary, so I know the MOU came before the Board of Selectmen back at the beginning of August, and we were talking more about a long-term, you know, investing bigger dollars for the ECC to be there for an extended period of time, but I think we're still waiting from guidance from this whole district for a temporary solution to just overrun enrollment and space issues at McKinley, which the board has known was.
McKinley is full. McKinley is beautiful, but full.
Yeah.
And it's, 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 you know, it's in a part of town where there's a lot of development, and so it's, it's not a trajectory that's happy in terms of, yeah, you know the dynamics.
And it's, it's an elementary school that sees enrollment throughout the year.
Yes.
Which gets to be challenging and being.
Does it have a very fluid district?
Very fluid, and, you know, right now, we're not, we don't have the challenges of the racial imbalance law, but.
So for example, the three, so if it's three years, I mean, I'm just trying to determine if you could give them another year, if you're not looking at, because, I mean, obviously, there's something we've gotten, you haven't gotten, Marcy, because you just got on the board, but.
I guess so, but.
There's just so many young families that are really in a desperate situation, if they could even get one more year of relief to have their children have that, that ability to go there. You know, these are working parents, and they're, you know, they're strapped, there's not a whole lot of options for them in town, there's barely any, and.
There is, there is actually a couple, a couple of new.
They could squeeze another year for those people, if we can, if they could have it sit there empty for a year.
It's not, it is not.
When these families could just use it for one year.
Hey, you know perfectly well that we have other town uses for that building that.
Well, it would take a while.
One thing I could, one thing I could say, that those, that, that building will not be empty, because we know that we've got nurses in a trailer.
No, I got it, I'm well aware.
Behind, behind that building.
But if you're going to wait the three years.
We're getting off topic with.
But I just want to say, if you're going to wait the three, if, if it, if at some point in three years, you may need to use it as swing space, obviously, for, for young children, that is a young children's space right now. So not a how, a lot of modifications, not the greatest space, but to, to change it into a nursing thing, you're not going to do that for three years, because you want to wait to see if you need the swing space.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is I would, you know, I would ask the town to consider letting them have one more year.
I am definitely, as I said.
Just say, that's all.
I reached out to.
Up to you.
To see what, it's up to us, it's not up to me, it's up.
Really up to you. You have to make the move.
There's a, there's a lease, you know, and we, we, the Board of Selectmen signed a lease that said that this was the last extension, so that's, we're getting off topic a little bit.
I have a question, back to topic.
But back to topic.
Talking about cost, I see in our resolution, it says $74,005,670, but then if you look at the report, it says 76 something. What's the discrepancy?
So the discrepancy there is that during the presentations to the board, the boards, the town boards, some questions were raised, so Sviggals did go back to their, their estimating company with some concerns that were raised, and they sharpened their pencil and they gave it a deeper look, and they determined that seven, the 76 might be, would be a better number. As you'll see from the top of the line there, those, those are really in, the, the increases are all in either estimates, or, I apologize, in contingencies and soft costs, they're, they're not in the actual construction number, because the construction numbers are what they are based on the national standard for construction of a building of this type. But they did do some deeper dive and look at the contingencies they were carrying, as well as the soft costs that they were carrying, based on feedback from the boards.
So they raised the percentage of the contingency?
They, they did a slightly increase on the contingencies.
What?
I don't have the breakdown.
So they added additional 5% contingency for renovation schemes to account for unforeseen costs, such as additional testing and abatement, additional structural repairs, moisture remediation, et cetera, among, among other small changes they made.
So they were concerned about things that would happen?
Well, our questions, the, the, that were posed from, but from the board, and frankly, also by, by Selectment Vitali, dealt a lot with the unknowns about hazardous waste or hazardous materials.
Right.
And so he, hearing that, understanding the age of the building, you know, they're familiar with, with buildings of this, of this vintage, I think that's where they were coming from. I will say, from our board's standpoint, my initial, my initial intention was to vote on the $76 million number, but my board members were uncomfortable without having more information from Sviggals about what that number entailed. They felt most comfortable voting on the, on the number that came from the, the final report on August 27th, and that was presented to us on the 3rd of September, and so that's why this number is the one that's coming before, he was the 74 million.
So are you comfortable with the 74, or do you want 76?
My, my recommendation would be that we use the best available numbers to us at this point, so if you would be comfortable, I would make some recommendation to make the motion to increase it to the 76.
And. Mr. Staffstrom, question for you.
Hi there.
Hello, thank you for joining us. If we were to leave the 74 million, and then it went to the Board of Finance, and they wanted to raise it to the 76 million, would it have to come back to the Board of Selectmen first? Would it have to come back to this board?
The, sort of the advice we've given is that if it is a de minimis change, that the Board of Finance could make the increase. If they were decreasing the cost, then, and the project maybe couldn't be done, it couldn't come back. So I guess the question that we would have to sort through is whether the $2 million is de minimis. I would suggest that in a, in the context of a project this size, $2 million is less than 5%, you might consider that to be de minimis. I do think that, I do think that the better course of action would be probably to make the amendment now, so it's consistent. But I think if you want to preserve your flexibility to have the Board of Finance do that, we probably could find that this was a, that was a de minimis, de minimis increase, even though it's $2 million, in the context of 74 million, it's not a huge amount of money. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah.
I, I would motion to make the amendment then, if.
To change it.
Change is 76,398,168.
Can I just get that 76,398,1?
68. 68. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, I, I hear the Board of Ed's concerns, being that it is a soft cost, and it may or may not be needed, but just for process, we have this information, and I suspect the que, if we don't act on it, I suspect the question will come up for Board of Finance, why did, why didn't you make an amendment to add it? Sviggals is presenting to the Board of Finance, I believe, a special meeting on Monday, and they can, they can kind of take it from there. But if we're going to move this forward, they'll feel like we need to go with the most recent number we have. Appreciate that this came in, you know, late in the process. I did see this, and I did check with Mr. Gazal, and it, it still keeps us under, it doesn't affect the waterfall significantly by adding this, this money in terms of keeping us well under our, our cap. Mr. Harris. Any other comments? Any public comment?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, guys, sorry, I can't turn my camera on myself here, so.
We know it's you from your voice.
All right. I mean, what is on the table right now is the amendment, so I'll limit my comment to that, because I really put in the chat to comment on the project as a whole. So on this amendment, I understand what you're doing, I just want to make sure we keep things clean, so that's, don't lose track here. You know, the timeline is, is significant, and I was perfectly comfortable with the 74, just speaking for my own self, the 74 million dollars. I think that the building committee can do a lot with that number, so obviously, it's up to you guys, but I was perfectly comfortable with 74, thank you.
Just, Mr. Staffstrom, so if the Board of Finance reduces it to 74, if we increase it, would it have to come back? Tell me again, to us or no?
I would suggest that was a de minimis increase, and it would be based on, as long as, the, the problem, whenever the Board of Finance reduces something, is the question is whether the project can still be completed.
And it can.
And I think we're in the realm of completion between 74 and 76. I'm assuming the Board of Education and the Building Committee are also going to try to minimize the cost of the project, so as a matter of just practice, the 76 might be the better number, because if it's 74 and then it ends up being 76, they have to come back to amend the resolution, we go through that whole process.
Right. Okay. Thank you, just wanted, again, just to double check.
Yeah.
Do you want to streamline, I don't want this to have to come back, considering that we are already, timing is definitely a concern when it comes to, we're going to need special legislation for this to move this forward, we want to make sure that we are maximizing our reimbursement, provided this gets approved by all town boards. Mr. Peterson?
No, I was just going to add, the timing, obviously, is a concern with the, with the reimbursement, but I also wanted to give credit to our past building committees that I think have been doing an excellent job with value engineering, with a lot of big projects, so I, I'm sure that, given the charge and given the money, they will, they will do an efficient job.
And they'll give us some money back.
I can't make any promises about that.
We won't be, we won't be. We won't be spending it, it will, we will come in, you know, we won't have to bond it. All right, so we're going to vote on just the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on this? You're going to love it.
I'm going to love it.
You're going, you're going to love it. Think about just future generations of.
Forget it, I've done a lot for our generations.
You have, you have.
The number is just.
It is, and if we can.
And if, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah.
Of leaving, of just leaving the children in that building?
No, I just, let's head, I just wanted to check.
Or you lose me.
All right. Any, Ms. Jacobson?
Thanks for the person who's unmuting me and muting me, thank you. Just want to say, thank you all, I just wanted to say, thank you to the three of you for putting this on today, and while I understand this is a large number that we're used to around the state, new buildings are being built at a, at a, at a very fast clip, and I'm appreciative of the state providing additional resources to our towns, to our students and our staff, in order to build these spaces that are conducive and inclusive of all of our students' needs. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for moving this forward, and if you change this number, I just wanted to note for the record that that reimbursement amount then also, you know, proportionately increases to over the 15, about 15, 15 million point seven. So I just wanted to note that as you change the new number to the higher amount, it also changes the reimbursement higher as well, so just that will change your town cash flow a little bit there, too, Christine, so, again, just thank you very much for your time, and this is a much-needed project out of a very old building, and looking forward to moving this along, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson, for your comment and for all your work on moving this forward. Any other comment? Mr. Peterson, thank you, extend the board's, thank you for participating in the feasibility study over the last year, thank you, extend my thanks and the board's thanks to the Board of Education for their work on this, and we wish you luck as you advocate for this project moving forward. If it passes, let's just see. If it passes, let's just see. All right, we're going to take it to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we have you here, I'm going to, Mr. Papa George has requested, there's also, not for this meeting, school vestibules is also on the Board of Ed's capital plan included in the book that we received. These projects also need to go for the state for approval. They would be reimbursable. So there's a timing issue with this as well. Request has been made for possibly having a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen next Monday prior to the Board of Finance vote. I'm not asking, I'm not putting you on the spot, but just putting it on the record. So if we can try to meet, we'll try to move this forward. If not, we will be putting this on the October 15th agenda for discussion and action.
What's that number going to be, Angeles?
And don't want to go, I did not take that to be off topic, it was really just to put it on the board's radar.
To you I have it. Just have to find the right page for it.
How many schools is it?
Five, it's five sites. It's the Roger Sherman, Stratfield, the ECC Ward.
They're separated out, so you don't, yeah.
They are separate. And Burr. That's why I don't.
Burr would be 773,948 dollars. McKinley, 637,889 dollars. Roger Sherman, 637,889 dollars. Stratfield Elementary School, 695,60 dollars. Early Childhood Center, 973,418. And these were added by the, these were moved ahead on the waterfall by the Board of Education just because they are security.
And page 31 of the backup I gave you tonight, the total for the five sites is 3,713,704. These would clarify, these would qualify for state reimbursement because they are considered a security upgrade.
So I will follow up with ladies offline. I just wanted to get the public and the board and bond council if there's someone that's coming their way. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 13 minutes. To hear and approve the draft minutes of September 3rd, 2025 and September 18th, 2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I make a motion to divide?
We can.
Oh, yeah.
Second that motion.
Yes.
Check, all in favor of separating?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So to hear and approve the draft minutes of September 3rd, 2025.
Somewhat.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, we'll take it for, board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Extentions? Okay, motion carries 2-0-1. To hear and approve the draft minutes of September 18th, 2025. Motion?
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Okay, refunds. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $53,955.24.
So, second.
This is all your seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none. Back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number 15, for Selectmen's update. So we have a Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, November 26th, 2025. We also have a meeting on November 12th, 2025 and December 10th, 2025. Ms. Follier actually brought this to my attention as she was adding Board of Selectmen dates to her calendar. Just wanted to get the board's thoughts on having that meeting on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Please, ma'am.
All right, so.
That's a baking night.
That's a baking night.
That's a prep food. And baking night.
Absolutely. Okay, so we will plan on canceling that meeting and I will not, we'll wait and see what the next couple months brings and if we need to schedule a special meeting, we will do that. But I think that it is right before the holiday and even for our staff and we don't want them to have to be presenting to us the night before Thanksgiving.
We have the swearing in that week for the newly elected officials as well. So there will be really no time to reschedule it.
Well, the swearing in may be the week before.
Oh, I don't know.
Possibly. That's to each side, I think, still. Also, I want to just share that Hazardous Waste Collection Day, the town's Hazardous Waste Collection Day is this Saturday, October 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Veterans Park, 909 Reef Road. Residents can dispose of household hazardous waste at no charge. Just load your car, which will be emptied for you. For information on what materials are acceptable and disposing of hazardous waste during other times of the year, please visit the Solid Waste and Recycling Department's webpage on the town website. So your paints, cleaners, all that stuff you can get rid of safely this Saturday. Also want to let the public know, the Health Department is going to be hosting two flu clinics at the Bigelow Center for Senior Activities Gym located at 100 Mona Terrace on October 15th from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and October 16th from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The clinics are walk-in only for anyone over the age of three years. For children younger than three or homebound Fairfield residents, please call the Public Health Nursing Office at 203-256-3150 to schedule an appointment. The clinics will offer both regular high dose age 65 and over and will have limited quantities of flu mist for those aged three to 18 years. Individuals who cannot attend one of the clinic dates can call 203-256-3150 for more information. There is zero cost for those with insurance, you know, please bring your insurance, for those with insurance, please bring your insurance cards. For those without insurance, the cash price for the vaccines are flu and DTAP are $30 each. High dose flu, Prevnar, 20 vaccines are $65 each. If you are an uninsured Fairfield resident who doesn't have the means to pay for vaccinations at this time, please call 203-256-3150 to discuss low cost and free vaccination programs that may be available. In addition to bringing your insurance card, please bring the completed consent form, which you can print out at FairfieldCT.org/health. Otherwise, forms will be available at the clinics for you to fill out. For announcements, the Onion Festival will be held, the Southport Onion Festival. Southport has the Globe Onion, which is native to Southport, which they celebrate.
That's our heritage, actually.
They have, they have an onion drop.
Ah.
They have food trucks and music and games and music. It's a fun, so if you're looking for something fun to do on Saturday.
After you drop off your hazmat.
After you throw your hazmat.
You can go get a little onions.
You can go and celebrate the Southport Globe Onion. There's also at Sherman Elementary School, I think, starting at 10:00 a.m., a Down syndrome awareness celebration. So I just wanted a little plug for that, for those who might be interested and have a child that's special, special as mine.
That's not the star.
No, it's a, it's a, a mom is kind of, she's, she's done it and.
The day in the sun, I meant. It's not the day in the sun.
No. Not that one. All right, because ladies, any announcements? All right, seeing none. We are on to 17, we are joined by our town attorney. Should we, we have, are we going to take both together or separate?
They need to be separate. So you need a motion to go into executive session and invite the town attorney, Attorney Trumbo, Attorney Talberg, and I think they wanted Anthony.
Anthony, okay.
So you have to invite us all into.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session with Town Attorney Philip Pierce, Attorney James Talberg, and Attorney Keith Trumbo, and Director of Parks and Recreation and Chief of Community Services, Anthony Calabrese, to discuss pending claim litigation, Knights of Columbus versus Fairfield, 322 CV 01579 AWT. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Follier, second by Ms. Kapchuk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in executive session. Aye, we are in executive session. It's all these giant files.
Recording in progress.
Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session with town attorney Philip Pierce concerning pending litigation Phoenician LLC versus Town Affairs. Possible action to approve stipulated judgment after executive session. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Kapczak, second by Ms. Folliot, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Recording in progress.
Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Spolier, seconded by Ms. Kupchak. Can I have a motion to approve the stipulated judgment that was discussed in executive session?
So moved. So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Spolier, seconded by Ms. Kupchak, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Kupchak, seconded by Ms. Spolier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.